We're here from City Council. If you please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for getting us through this trying, a few weeks that the nation's been facing, and giving your hand upon our city. Give us the wisdom and understanding to make all the decisions that we make here tonight in the best interest of all concerned. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Please be seated. Bob, for everyone, thanks for being here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. You got one there in front of you. There was some changes made yesterday, so make sure you've got the correct one in front of you. Under unfinished business, it goes through item L, and new business has an A and V. And in the footnotes, it says 1 October 2025. That is the current agenda. And if everyone is good with that one, I'll take a motion for approval of that agenda. Motion by Bob, you'll have a second. Second by Tom, all in favor. For O, Steve Levin had a little emergency this evening with his daughter's car breaking down, and he had to go rescue her through Atlanta traffic up to Athens, so he's not going to be able to make it back on tonight. Next item, number three, approval of the minutes. The first one is the minutes from the workshop held pre-September 2025. You should have all those minutes there in front of you. If you hadn't had a chance to look them over, please do that. Or entertain a motion for acceptance or approval of those minutes. Motion two, approve the minutes from 3 September 2025. You'll have a second.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor. For O, next, the minutes from the hearing, public hearing held on 4 September 2025. Same question?
Two minutes long.
Really?
Uh, move to accept that?
Move to accept, you'll have a second. And that was by Carol. Second by Bob, all in favor. For O, next, item C, minutes from the meeting on 4 September. Little bit longer minutes there. Probably had a chance to look them over. If I didn't find anything, otherwise take a motion likewise for acceptance and approval of those minutes. So moved. Got a motion from Bob, you'll have a second. Second by Steve, all in favor. For O, thank you much. Financial report in front of me. Thanks, Bob, for coming in there during the month and going over those quickly up this street. No one has a question? I'll take a motion for acceptance of the financial report. Somebody moved to accept by Bob, you'll have a second. Second by Steve, all in favor. For O, thank you much. Reports from departments, committees, and board of City Council.
All in favor?
Wow, all right. Council members, floor, where was I last time? I don't remember. I've covered Tom.
Couple things. Most of it's covered inside. I was, uh, do we have, uh, on the agenda to discuss the estimates on the bids for the tree stuff?
We have.
Are you gonna do it under the memorial?
Yeah.
Then I have no.
All right, thank you.
Time to take.
See you, Dave.
I guess during this time, I'd like to, uh, I know we have a, our board has come up with a Parks for the Ethics Committee from the council. I'd like to nominate Richard Riley.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I will second the nomination.
Okay.
Richard knows what's going on.
Exactly.
He's here every month.
Better first, a motion by Steve Davis to nominate Richard Riley to the Ethics Board. And second by Carol, any further discussion, all in favor. For O, thank you much. Congratulations or condolences.
Yes, I want to look into, I've got a few things to say tonight. I've gotten a little discouraged over the last few months with the way some things are going. Going back to dysfunctional, I think, Mr. Gordon. Amen. And make a statement to the city that our city council is dysfunctional. Which his son's running for one of the positions with the city on the council. But, you know, maybe Mr. Gordon's right. Because, uh, I think the council and the mayor, we're all dysfunctional. You know? There's a division. If nobody sees it, they're blind as far as if you're sitting on this council and the mayor. We ask for things, we ask to be updated, nothing happens. Sent two emails to the mayor this month asking for an update on the trees. What are we doing with it? What about the stage height? It's 38 inches to the top of the deck on, over there for the amphitheater. County code calls for 30 inches or higher, supposed to have a rail around it. There's liability issues there I'm worried about. I get crickets back. No, no response to any of my emails that I sent too. I know they went out because I had a couple of people tell me they read them. So I'm disappointed there. I know everybody has a right to free speech. You can vote for whoever you want, you can campaign wherever you want. When, my feelings are, if you, if you don't like us, I'm not up right now to be elected. But if you don't like somebody that's, that you're working with here, to me, it's just bad taste to campaign against them with signs in New York and openly campaigning against people that you're supposed to be getting along with. This is just my opinion. And I'm just getting sick of things, the way things are handled around here and the attitudes of a lot of people. Including the mayor. He's let, you know, his property down there's got two signs for people that are running against two people that are on the council. You know, like I said, you can vote and do what you want, but to me, it's poor taste and it just shows some disrespect, a lot of disrespect for the people you're supposed to be getting along with that work here. And so I'm tired of that. You know, there's, you know, the mayor was asked to give us a weekly, we even did a referendum asking him to give us at least a weekly update of what's going on in the city. We do anything. I didn't, you know, these, these estimates for these tree, you know, repairs, stumps over here. That's the first I've seen of, the first I even did other than hearsay that he was getting estimates for all this stuff. That's what I asked him about in my emails. What are we doing on the, you know, for these stumps? The park looks terrible. Everybody's asking me, what are y'all doing over there? You know? I don't have an answer for them, other than find the mayor and ask him. You know, why can't we get a, just a Friday, hey, this is an update? You know, got a tree issue, I got some bids going out, we don't, you know, whatever. But we sit here until, we come there and sit down with y'all, we pretty much don't know what's going on until it's time for a meeting. I've just gotten tired. We got zoning issues. Some places over here, around here, don't worry about it, you don't need a permit. Another place over here, yeah, you gotta have a permit. You know, let's call Jeremy down here. We got a zoning administrator here. Why aren't we using him? I mean, he charges a hundred dollars, okay. We charge people who want a permit a hundred dollars. We don't have to, that shouldn't cost us anything. So the mayor's picking up the ball to say he's gonna do it, do this one, or he's gonna do that one. It gets pretty old. Case in point, Little Street, there's two trailers over here that are being renovated. And you can't tell me, looking from the street, that the electrical wasn't touched inside that place. All the insulation, everything siding, everything's torn off. And the only thing that the contractor said was they were putting a roof on it. Then he calls the city clerk and asks her, do I need a permit? Well, that's not the procedure. Well, you have procedures when you do things around here. You're supposed to come in here and fill out an application. You're supposed to go to our zoning administrator, and he's supposed to make a decision on whether it's supposed to have a permit or not. Not. Now, let me call down to the county and ask, uh, Mr. Gilbert there, do we need a permit or not? Well, the man said we, he wasn't doing no after electrical plumbing, so I guess we don't need, he don't need a permit. Okay. Well, if you go back to our city ordinances for zoning, 156.023, H25, says, says property value increase of $500 more requires a permit. There's no permit over there for those two blocks. But y'all made the man over here on, on, uh, Old Fairway Road. He had a permit nailed in front of his door, and then y'all been on him about, apparently because he put a back porch on his house, and maybe he didn't have a permit for it. Yet the trailer, two trailers over there got two new porches on each one of them. They're not boards replaced, they're brand new porches. But you know, that man's gonna say I'm picking on him, but I just want the city as a whole to do what we're supposed to do for everybody, not just, okay, go ahead, you know, no permits. Should be permits for that over there. You know, we got derelict property that all, we were so hot and heavy on getting places cleaned up around here. We got a couple of them cleaned up. Now there's nothing. You know, that house on Old Fairway Road, the greenhouse, is terrible. You know, it's an isolate, we fixed a pave on Fairway Road. You know, but nothing's been done about that. Can we send a letter out, uh, to the property owner, mayor, and ask them if they will clean up the property? Or they have to clean up the property in accordance with our ordinances?
We can. And it's just surprising that, you know, from the comments you made about not letting people know this is the person you've mentioned about these properties in here. But we can, we can definitely send out a letter if they're not in compliance with our codes. And that's what we try to do for everything. You mentioned about the error of someone calling the city clerk to see if a permit was needed. I'm really not sure where else you would start in the city. Because we are the issuing authority, and we are the ones, well, we're not issuing authority, we're the approval authority. And it does start with us, not with Jeremy Gilbert down in the county. Because they want to enforce county codes. Our city codes are different than the county codes. So you first have to get approval for your project and find out if you do in fact need a permit here at the city. Then once we approve the permit, we send it down to the county for them to issue the permit due to enforcement and building inspections.
Is that done for those two trailers?
From the information, as you stated, new roofs do not require a permit. And if a homeowner changes a light switch, I'm not sure what the electrical was that you were talking about, but we did not get a request for a permit for it. But I do not know that that the.
I've asked about that property for, for the last two months.
Now we're talking about the.
Yeah, and he yelled at me in a HOA meeting that you were sitting beside him at about me harassing him as a contractor in the city. Because I wanted to ask about permits for that over there. So I'm, I'm just disgusted in it, the, the way things flow around here. I've been on here for four years.
I am too. And you know, when you talk about signs and things, and yet you have city council members that send out emails asking for the removal of myself and other council members. And I consider that just as unprofessional, but probably that's what is gate is some of those council members and myself putting signs in the yard. You know, if people want to call for our ouster and call for a change in my position and other council member's position, I think gloves are off. And if we want to back a candidate that we think is best for the city, that's what we're gonna do. If it means putting a sign on the property, so be it. I want to do what's best for the city, that's all I've ever done, and that's what I'm gonna continue to do.
It's still your parents.
Change a council member, making a team.
Get along with people unless they go.
I've done along with people for 17 years in this position.
I know.
And I've been, you know, very quiet. I have never come out in favor or against any city council member. I've always stayed neutral, but this time, when some city council members chose to take it upon themselves to make accusations and comments, then I've entered the fray. So that's exactly what happened there. And you talked about estimates on the tree removals and things like that. Those estimates all come into the city clerk. I get them the same way you do. You don't come to me and ask for, if I've got estimates from Double P or from M and E Grady or whatever.
Who you were getting estimates from?
They come to the clerk.
Ask you why you can't let us know what's going on?
You come to see the clerk. That's how I find out. I come in here and see the clerk. How many times?
How many times? How come you don't answer emails when I send you two emails? Just ask them.
As I have said, I'm, I'm not gonna get in the mud and wrestle. But I, I do apologize, I did not see your first email to.
There were two of them, okay? And Pamela even told me she even pointed them out to you in here, and you said, yeah, I'll get.
And I said, let him know that you have the information. The information is here. I don't keep all that information. So if you know where to look, you can find it. Your elected council member, you should know that the point of contact is the city clerk.
Okay.
Using the zoning administrator. Yes, we do use the zoning administrator. We just did use the zoning administrator. We sent a various application over to him because it, for particular on this one, I wanted to keep it at arm's rent, arm's length, because it did involve a city council member. So I did use the zoning administrator. Yes, he charges a hundred dollars an hour. It used to be if we gave him four building permits to look over and approve, he could do four of them in an hour. We got a $100 bill for doing four building permits. He changed now that it's a minimum of $100 per building permit. It's something that could be done in 10 or 15 minutes a lot of times, especially with something very simple like a fence construction to make sure that the delineated boundaries are within the parcel. And so there's no sense to send it over for a hundred dollars, just look at a building permit for a fence and decide if it's legal or not.
Why do we have a zoning administrator then? If you're gonna be the zoning administrator, why are you tricking Jesus?
We can't, well, no, if you read, read the ordinance, if you listen to me, read the ordinance.
I'm tired of you bringing stuff down my throat.
Read the ordinance. It says the zoning administrator or designated agent, I am the designated agent.
You can't handle, you're not supposed to have two jobs in the city.
I'm not sure where that comes from. All of us have multiple jobs in the city. Some are personnel, some are elect, no, that is not true. That is not true. You need to read the ordinance and the charter.
Yeah.
Because you might be talking about someone having a paid position somewhere, running for an office. Yeah, you can't do that. But we all have multiple jobs. I'm animal control officer, I'm director of public safety, I can just go down a list. There's a lot of jobs I have with the city. So according to that, they're all illegal? Is that right? Is that what you're saying? It is what you're saying, what's wrong? Okay. Back porch height, we're talking about the back porch heights over here at the porch behind Mr. Dex, who did an excellent job on building this porch. It is high enough that the county has said, hey, it needs to have a rail. Because it is a porch, it was designed as a porch, built as a porch, a very good porch. The county was mistaken in the beginning, thinking that it was just a replacement, a replacement for a concrete stoop. Turned out that it was a very nice deck with some stairs and rails that was done there. So when the county learned that, they said, oh, he needs a building permit for that now. Originally, the county said, no, no building permit was required.
Okay.
And that's what happened with that one. On the stage, that is not a stage. That is the foundation for an amphitheater that we started constructing three years ago and have not finished. That was never built or designed to be a stage. Therefore, it never required a rail. It was part of a building that is still under construction. Yes, we can rope it off and not use it, that would be.
Well, it needs to be done. I mean, if a kid falls off of it, then who's gonna be in trouble?
Right now, there's cones, thanks to Bob. Bob has taken some cones over there. We can put some caution tape around it, whatever you'd like to do. I mean, we can rope off the whole walk, the whole walking trail part if someone is walking around there and twists an ankle. And you think we're gonna be liable for that? Yet there are cer- certain measures of common sense that had to be.
I think that's an attorney question. If he falls off of a, of this concrete deck over here, that's 38 inches high on the high end, it's, it's a platform, yeah, it's a platform, but it could be considered a deck if it was built in my backyard. And if a kid rides a tricycle off the end of it, who's liable?
How high is the playground equipment? How high do the kids?
That's not where I'm at. I'm talking about codes, it's 30 inches.
For a deck, for a deck that is built as a deck. This was never designed or built as a deck. That's why that was not a feature that was added to the construction plans of that. Yes, it never has been finished, it is under construction, and it's in market as such. Or we can put a temporary rail, like Bob has put the cones up there. We can stretch a temporary caution tape or put a rail up on the inside, that will make it feel better. We can go back to the area that is lower than 30, 31 inches, whatever, you know, height we want. We can put a temporary rail around that corner. The rest of it's lower. It starts at grade level, at ground level on the west end, and then gradually rises up to the east end. We've used it for three years.
Okay. Well, I guess we've been lucky for three years. Yeah. As far as going back to the deck issue, I called Mr. Gilbert about the two, of the brand new decks on the trailers over here. And he said that unless he got a request from the city, an application, that they weren't, can come out and look at those decks, even though they're brand new. But y'all.
That's correct.
All right. Then how come I haven't made y'all aware that those decks over there on that, those two locations are new?
Were they new when there was never existing decks? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm asking that.
They didn't replace boards, they're brand new decks. You go look at the boards, everywhere, lumber, everything is brand new. Yeah. Yeah. And I asked Mr. Gilbert, they need to, well, we're not gonna do anything unless we get a request from the, from the city first, was his answer. So if they didn't fill out the paperwork, Mr. Whitley, who was our zoning administrator, doesn't go take a look and see if, what's going on over there, then, you know, I guess it's just dead in the water.
Well, he's the administrator, not code enforcement. Right now, our code enforcement officer is not working. But, um, have we been told that that was all new construction on the deck on that, or we thought that it was existing?
We were told it was existing. And Jeremy had told me that they don't enforce city codes.
And that's correct, they don't. They don't, uh, well, no, that's not, that's actually, that's not exactly true. They do enforce city codes. They do not enforce their county code inside the city. They enforce our city code. That's, that's what we had the intergovernmental agreement for, where we allow them to collect impact fees inside the city. And in return, they issue permits and conduct building inspections for the city.
That's all I've got.
All right. Which was the, I'm sorry, I got one of the things for you, the derelict properties, well, which ones were those?
Talking about the first house on the left, the greenhouse.
And the one on Little Street.
The one you had away three years ago is the McClellan House.
And the one on Little Street that's got more trash on it than the dump center down there.
Yep. And, and we've got the one at the top of the hill on 362, heading west on the left side there.
Yep.
That's standing on the, those are the three that I know of that are flaking in the city right now. And we do need to, we do need to look at those.
Yeah, and, and kind of tagging on Steve just a second. I'll be honest, the intergovernmental agreement seems to be willy-nilly. Uh, I know that we have a book. I remember Brandon bringing it in here about that thing. And part of that was code enforcement, you know, senate inspectors out, et cetera. And when you call now, you kind of get a deer in the headlights look or a response. And the weird thing is, is I saw on these, uh, that there may be somebody wanting to move one of those things. I'm not sure if it was that specific one, but I saw it on Facebook page, somebody asking for a, if they knew of anybody to move a mobile home. So I don't know.
We're talking about the Little Street?
Uh, I, I don't know if those are the ones. So I'm not gonna say that they are, but the contractor was acquiring. So I don't know if, if that's because one of the lots is small, one's bigger, I don't know.
Yeah, most of those lots along, they are substandard for our code now. They were pre-existing non-conforming lots, which means at the time that they were made building lots, the zoning code either was not in existence or allowed for those sized lots. So they were pre-existing non-conforming. But single wide, mobile homes have been, I don't want to really say outlawed, but the standards have been changed so that you cannot bring those in any longer. It's mainly because of the 412 roof pitch or the height or the length versus width requirements, that they're not able to be built in. All right, Bob, you're next.
Okay. I have one more question.
Well, I'm sorry.
All right. Going back to the fact that he said he's just putting roofs on there. You say you, you're the mayor, you ride around the city, you've ridden by there, you've seen more being done than a roof.
Correct. I have, I know that there was also siding replaced.
And the big huge dumpster with everything torn out, put in it, the door standing open, you can see new shoe rock, raw walls inside and everything?
Yes.
That's gotta be more than $500 worth of improvement.
It's $500 worth? And that, that's a question that I brought up, um, the other day. Is it, let's say, let's say your roof is old, let's say you got a 25-year-old roof, and it's in bad shape, and it's leaking, and it's failing, and you have a new roof put on. Are you increasing the value of your house? Or are you replacing your house back to what it was 20 years ago when you bought it? And that's, that's the question that I have, is when you're doing that, are you making an improvement or is it a repair? Are you adding something to your house that's increasing the value of your house? Are you repairing an officiated item in your house? And that, that goes right to what you're saying. If somebody, like for us, replacing a roof does not require a building permit, but let's face it, if you buy a house with a new roof versus one that's got an old or leaky or failing roof, it's gonna increase the value of the house more than $500. But is that just a maintenance and repair? Or is that an improvement that would add value to the house? Same thing for a deck, that if you had a deck or a porch at your house, and that is when you, you bought the house or what it was appraised at, and over the years, that porch has deteriorated and you replace it, are you increasing the value of your house? Or are you just preventing degradation of your house by repairing the deck?
Based on the tax assessment here, you've got your grass increases the value of your house, that's what it is.
But I'm saying you're wearing this.
So anyway, that, that's a legitimate question that I have on that. And what I've been explained is if it is replacing an existing feature of the house, it's not an increase in the value. Now, if you add it on a room, add it on something that wasn't there, yeah, then you could be increasing the value.
About the siding?
About what?
Siding, if it had old masonite in the door, or, uh, I guess it's, uh, plastic or whatever.
Yeah, vinyl siding.
Vinyl siding. If you put hardy plank on it, I get, I promise you, if I called Mr. Hobbs up here, them four folks in.
And, and painting your house, you know, that might give you a value increase, but it's not a structural thing. And I'm wondering about like vinyl siding or even hardy plank. Yeah, you could say hardy plank can be structural, but that's not the purpose.
Well, unfortunately, our code does differentiate, so if we have to, unfortunately, we have to follow it. So if we're following it, then we need to.
So we'll have to find out if that is an increase in value or if it's a repair, or if it's a differentiated. But yeah, I've had the same questions about that, because that does come up when you're doing something. You might spend, you know, $2,000, $3,000 on something that you're repairing, but it's not increasing the value of your house. You're repairing something that is failing. I mean, that, that's the question that I personally have had with it, and have tried to reason that out. All right, Bob.
Oh, thanks for the county or whoever cleaned up, second district.
Yeah, that was the county, the guy that worked on the ditches, the.
Right, he's there now?
Yeah. Hopefully that's gonna really help.
And I noticed again that, well, I guess with all the trees, the leaves from the trees, I need to go back over there, and that's gonna be an ongoing issue in the middle strains. Did they clean between the stop sign and the trees? The underneath the, underneath.
I understand they did. I understand they did. I saw, obviously, I had to follow up there, drop my phone in with a camera, you know, something, but, but we probably need to look at that, make sure. They said they were going to, and I'll, I'll follow up. I don't know.
I saw the fire hose, but I didn't, I guess it was lunchtime when I just happened to hear about it. I think anything that I have, uh, can wait, Mr. Paul, unfinished business.
All right.
Carol? Well, we don't have on here the Sherlock Holmes Dinner Theater that we had.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, I, I'll cover that under here. We had our Sherlock, um, Holmes Mystery Dinner Theater on the 12th and 13th. It was well-attended. We had total, did you know the total number of people? Family? It's like, it was like 20, 20.
20 something the first night.
36 the second night. So, but we ended up making, and this is wonderful, we ended up, and we ended up making 13, what's the total, 13 something, $1,300. 1335.
Was that for paying all the expenses?
1335, 345. Okay, 1330. So we made $1,330 from it, that, and that's after paying all the expenses and everything, that is going to the library to buy new books for them. So it was great. If you saw, it was in the paper, and lots of people came, and lots of people enjoyed it, and it was wonderful. The other thing that I have is that I am making a donation to the library, and we had voted on this back when Mila was the librarian, and in 2023, we had voted on having a storybook trail around the walking trail. The idea behind it is you have the pages of the book, and parents and grandparents can walk around with their children and read the book as they go around. Yeah, I brought my.
Are you ready for the unveiling? Are you ready for the unveiling?
I'm ready for the unveiling. This is the first, this is the first book that will be on the thing. There are 11 pages of books, I believe, 11 pages.
The other pages, 11 stations.
And, um, and so.
Station tells the parents how to do the trail.
No, we don't have the direction. We don't have the direction. We figure, people can figure this out. But anyway, this is the first page, and so then like the next page would have page one and two and three and four, all the way down to the final page. This part will stay forever, but we can, um, get new books to put around the trail at, at some point. And the nice thing about this is, is it can be at the library, and it can be checked out at the library if, um, Concord wanted to borrow it, or Meansville wanted to borrow it, or somebody else wanted to borrow it. And so it would be nice. We also have a, um, a person that is interested in sponsoring the next book. And he said they would like to maybe interested in totally sponsoring the book free. So all we would have to do would be to replace these, and we have another one for our walking trail. So I'm very, very excited about this, and I'm very, very thrilled about being able to do this. So, um, the everything, I'm donating everything, the signs and the, the printing and everything, and so it will go into the library.
Is that going in through with the Bobby and Betty?
How would that interfere?
I asked if it was.
Oh, no.
That's all I need.
Yeah, no, it's just gonna be another book in the library, but it's not a book. It's gonna be around the walking trails where it's gonna be. So we're gonna put it around the walking trail for the month of October. Obviously, we'll move it from the trunk or tree, but for the month of October, people can, um, walk, and I'll put it up next week, so it'll be in multiple spots around there. I think it's exciting. Alright, I think that's it.
Alright, thank you. Good job. Now, I know it's been a long time coming.
It has, it has.
Literacy Council, everybody that's helped out with that project set up.
It was much better than the original plan. The, the original plan was problematic in that you had to, it had stands and all this kind of stuff. This one, it's real easy to make sure that you can cut the grass around it and it, you know, no problem. And it's waterproof, and it should last a long time.
We're gonna need more doggie poop bags.
Of them taking their dogs around? There would probably be more of those anyway.
You've got really reading dog, seeing eye dogs.
Seeing, reading dogs.
More bags for this. Alright, City Attorney Report, over to you, sir.
Mayor, really, the only thing I have is the Ethics Board. Now that we have a, a full board, we need to arrange for a meeting. Um, so I don't know if Adam Plurk can arrange that or send out an email to everybody if you have everybody's contact information. If you can just start the stream, I, I'm happy to take it up from there, or you can send it to me. Um, that's all, man.
Good, good. Finally, something moving forward.
Yeah, good deal. Alright, Mayor's report, most of mine, I think, is going to be covered later on. I did have a couple little things. Uh, one thing, congratulations to all the council members and everybody that makes the city work. Our government is not shut down. We have created and effectively managed a budget, and, um.
Although we are working for free mostly.
Yeah, well, that's, maybe that's it, we work for free. They, they get, what, $500 a day, I think they said, for the area today, the, uh, the congressman. But Carol did remind us of something, uh, last week, I think you brought this up earlier in the week, that back when, um, you were first coming on board, we had $5,000 in the bank, and the discussion was, should we buy a CD, a deposit, a specific deposit, and put that in, and what should we do with that money that was all the county had?
City.
I mean, the city had, yeah. And so, uh, as you saw by looking at the financial report, um, we're doing pretty well, just in the general fund, $800,000 plus, I think overall about 1.4 million.
So why aren't we giving those back to the citizens?
We do, we, that's why we have lowered our taxes, um, every year for the past 17 years. We, um, we do give back to the citizens, just like this, uh, project here, like improving the amphitheater, doing what we can for the park and the quality of life, plus we are trying to lower taxes. We have taken the burden off of the city residents, the property taxes every year for 17 years, and I'm hoping we can continue to do that. Uh, we continuously try to find other revenue sources, whether it's franchise fees or, um, other grants and all the other sources we can, so we're not dependent upon city property taxes on our citizens. The average city property tax, I believe, is around $200 a year for the city. And people that live in HOAs pay over three times that just for their HOA dues. And we have, we have the power of the streetlights everywhere around the city, we have the backs of potholes, we have to maintain the public areas. We, we run the library and the parks and recreation, all on that amount of money, plus the other donations, grants, and, uh, franchise fees that we get. So we do try to lower the taxes every time we can, and again, we have done that every year for the past 16 years.
Um, we've added about 500 or 600 more people too.
Well, that's why, I mean, that, that's part of it too, but then that adds five or six hundred more people to get services to, more streetlights, more road uses, everything else.
All relevant.
Yeah, generally, the cost of community services, you spend about a dollar and 35 cents for every dollar you take in, um, for a resident. And for a business, you actually make money for every dollar in taxes you take in. And for agricultural land, you make money for every dollar you take in, but for citizens, you lose with every additional household. I mean, every additional household doesn't mean you have to build a new schoolroom or hire a new deputy or whatever it is, but when you add up maybe 100 of them or 200 of them, at some point, you do have to make those expenses. So every additional house does cost you money. Um, another thing I've made some notes of, that, uh, we are elected officials, and we need to set the examples. Um, we've had complaints around the city about speeding, people running stop signs, uh, if it's zoning. I made notes that we're not just citizens or civilians, we're elected officials. And when we qualify and agree to be elected, we can, we're subject to different standards. We have to stand up here and take accusations and abuse from citizens. Um, if a citizen did that to a fellow citizen, they could be held for libel or slander, but when you're an elected official, all those rights go out the window. We did that voluntarily, so I just want to always bring that to everyone's attention. Um, everything else I have is gonna be covered, um, county matters.
I did remember one thing, the bathrooms have been clean, nobody, there's been no vandalism, no trash, no.
Yeah, I've been running out there today, but new, uh, deadbolts on the doors.
Schools about to.
Right, right, I think you were right about that, that was it. So we're not having any problems.
You have that on tape?
I was right, they got it, okay.
There was, uh, kids over there today on skateboards and things, there was a bunch of kids around, there was people walking, there were pets, a lot of people out there walking, but the restrooms were, were clean.
And since we have those dryers, we especially don't have a lot of trash generated either.
Much, uh, towel waste, and they're not clogging, clogging up the toilets.
Right.
Alright, I didn't get a brief on county matters, um, if you talk to me.
I reached out to Rob, and I think he's getting pretty covered up.
Yeah, yeah, same with the commissioners, and I didn't make it to this past, yes, nevermind, got paid. And, um, I didn't make it to the last commissioner's meeting, or I would probably have a more hard hit on that. Pretty busy trying to stall them.
I know, two roads that were supposed to be.
McKinley's.
McKinley's all blocked off, and trees have been cut down.
There have been water lines and some stuff.
Yeah.
He did tell me that.
Two, two roads, uh. Yeah. Uh, Beverly, Library Report, ma'am.
Alright. Appreciate that, um.
Thank you.
Um, our classes, um, I guess the Little Leafs next, tomorrow. So I'm starting up with the Little Leafs again. And the big thing we're excited about, Bobby was over there looking at playing with me, and Carol, we used it for Cheer Yoga, is we've got an internet, in, interactive screen.
Huge.
And, um, yes, so please come over and see it, it's really awesome. It's for educational purposes, which we use. And, uh, it, it's really neat for the kids, for the adults, for, um, giving, um, instructional purposes, that we are able to do computer classes, they can come up there and, you know, you can see what you're doing, because it's, like you said, it's huge. It's touchscreen, it's not totally working, but it will be soon. And it was donated to our library, and it in itself is more than the entire budget for our library. So it's a really neat thing that we've been able to add to the city.
But in addition to new furniture, you got new children's furniture.
Yes, I did get new children's furniture for the new children's area, so, yeah.
Alright.
It's looking good.
It is, thank you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. That was the mystery dinner, yes, I'm planning on those new books.
It was just a tax.
I know, it was the new books, I'm so excited. So if you have any new books, any authors, or any titles you want to hear, just let me know, we'll get them.
Alright, sounds good, and I think you mentioned you will not be giving away books this year at the trunk or tree.
Yes.
Because we've been giving out some other books, and we'll give you all.
Yes, the Pike County literacy program that we had is run out. Um, last year, we gave over 700 books to the kids in Pike. We don't have that amount now. If I give out what we have, then I won't have anything for the free libraries. Because we're not getting the donations, because people don't have books. And so, um, we're going to wait, and I'll, I'll deal with that next year when the books are on that. But for now, we'll have books for the children for the free libraries, but the free libraries are a big deal, aren't they, Bobby?
They do.
Yes, people are using them and constantly filling them out.
Alright, thank you. Alright, unfinished business, City Main Waterline Project improvements update. We did another walkthrough this week, and we identified just a few more cosmetic areas. And, um, everything is, is looking good, there, there's still a few things that we identified, yes.
I think the day you were gone, they were out there working on that.
Yeah, I know, they had the, they had a earth blue vermin.
I don't know what they did. Yeah, they still have the low spot right here in Midland and 360, but there's still a few areas that are, that are working. They, they have been working to level out some of the areas that were questionable.
I think the worst thing I saw that time was, uh, to the park, the entrance to the park.
Yeah, with it, with it.
Cement thing.
And the thing right next to it.
Yeah, what I'm recommending for that is just to put a.
curb?
Yeah, like a cement apron, like we did at Little Street. We had the same problem right there at Little Street, where there was a valve right where people turn, and it was always getting damaged. And we widened it or increased, decreased the radius of the turn there and set the valve in concrete part of that radius.
And the food trucks may have issues with that during.
They don't go in that part of it.
The water shooter boxes.
A little bit flat, and they just drive over it, you know.
So you're gonna lower it?
No, we're gonna, that, right now, it's a little bit lower than the road bed. And so we'll just fill in from the road bed right over top of where that valve is, so they'll drop right over it.
We can just asphalt it like the D O T did.
Yeah, yeah, and then try to find it later.
We still owe them money, right?
Uh, we have some retention until we get everything.
Ten bucks, right?
Right, ten percent.
I, I still think we need another final walk for making sure that the areas we identified.
Yes, there will be, the, the things that we did last week, and they still have to fix those, and then, because there's some they had not fixed, as of today.
I love the water meter boxes.
Yes. Yep.
You were correct.
So other matches, we're good, um, yeah, let's see, the fire float testing, that's down there.
The flow rate was good?
Yeah. Alright, uh, item B, Second District Road drains and curving issues. You may have heard, uh, Bobby and myself just talking about those. The county come out and cleared the drains, and, um, I, I, I'm thinking they're gonna work much better. We'll see, you know, when we get some rain, but I think that's gonna help us a lot. And we'll see if we still have the need for the curb. If, uh, maybe if the ditches are cleared out and working the way they're supposed to, the residents on the south side of Second District Road won't have as much water running over into their properties. I still think we might need a little lip, but just, I mean, it won't take a two-inch lip of curving or something through there just to keep it running off the road and into their yards and under their houses, instead of bringing it down to the ditch. So we'll, we'll have a little bit better look at it now that the county has gone in and cleaned out those ditches and drains, and we'll see how it functions now. Uh, next item, the Memorial Tree Planning Project for the park, or for park update. Everybody's noticed the moonscape or whatever waste area out there, it looks awful where we had all those trees. We were a little notice that we had dead trees that were shedding limbs there at the park. And we taped it off to keep people from having limbs fall on them. We had a tree company come out, and we had thought there was only six trees that were in need of removal. When we got up there and looked, every one of those pine trees was either dead, diseased, dying, or severely split and damaged. We then thought that there was 26 that needed to go for sure. So Southern Pride Tree Company came out, they gave us the best estimate, they would do three days of work for $3,250 a day, and remove all those trees and do some other trimming there around the park for us. So we had them remove those trees. So we relieved ourselves of the hazard, we still have three trees at the south end that are not in good shape. If anyone wants to take a look at them sometime, you can see where they are split and twisted.
There are diseases, based on the harvest we had looked at.
Yes, yes, and so they, they also need to come down. The reason Southern Pride didn't take those down is, like I mentioned, they figured out for 26 trees, three days' work, plus the trimming and everything they had, they could do that. Well, they ended up doing, I think, 34 trees, and they just said, hey, we just can't do anymore for that price. So they left those three on the south end, so they are gonna need to be removed. And all of the stumps we would like to have taken care of.
I was looking at these quotes. Two of them are only grinding.
Correct.
Two of them, well, actually, one of them is kind of sort of disgrading what's there. Double T is the only one that actually has given us something, and even those are, none of the, excuse me, none of these include locates, which, of course, we call in the locates.
Yes.
But they want us to be responsible in case, and I don't know if there's any utilities other than water down there or not.
The only utility other than water is our own self-run wiring, because it goes out to that one.
To that one line. And it actually gets to be replaced anymore.
And these will be pulled out.
So I have suggestions, it's, it's obviously not a, uh, those three trees, the ones that are gonna do the repairs, get the stump out, are not gonna take the trees down.
Right.
So we could get the trees removed and then put out a proper.
We had done to a bit on the trees.
And then put a proper scope, so that everybody's singing the same song on what we want done. Because once you remove those stumps, there's not enough dirt there, it's already in a little area anyway. So there's not enough, dirt's gonna have to be brought in. And the one I was talking about that didn't, that's.
All of them have trees on there.
It's, uh, it's grinding.
Yes, yes.
Hauling and rough grading, it doesn't say about, and they're talking about hauling away the stops.
Yes, it was.
So, and there's, there's no, there's no dirt come back, we're gonna have to have dirt, without question. Somewhere. Now, if we got someone in the city that can get, that's cool, but there's gonna have to bring some dirt inside soon, that if they bring it to grade, so that it will drain toward our drains that are plugged up over there, by the way, underneath the exit, that we still need to find the pipe. We're gonna have, we might as well do it all at one time instead of piecemealing, because piecemealing could cost us an extra, at minimum, 36 and 97, that's probably gonna cost another 14,000 bucks. It's gonna cost us more to get the stumps gone and graded than it did to get the trees cut.
Well, so we have the one that says mobilization removal of stumps as discussed, hauling rough grading is $4,850.
So their total is 8,000.
Well, they're going to back up.
And then if you.
It's 48,450, I had it together.
But my, my point to it is, is, and then again, I don't, I, I've bid a lot of contracts, I've never bid one that says as discussed, but I mean, it's spelled out so we know what we're talking about, but I'm not sure what was discussed. But, uh.
I think just what they have written.
Well, I mean, had to discuss, that means somebody talked to them, so.
Yeah, I did, I talked to them.
My point to them is, is, I, I think we should, uh, spell it out, send it back to them. Since we've still got to get the trees down, if they want to cut the trees down for 3,600 bucks, knock them out. But the rest of it, I think we can. knock them out. But the rest of it, I think we need to back up, because we could, we could spend a lot of money and still not have it. Because we really do need to put that drainage pipe or clear it under the exit there at the park. About the V. If you remember when it rained, I think I got a picture of it. It looked like a lake out there. So this is not gonna. It, all this is gonna do, since there's no trees to suck the water up, let's face it, this is gonna just add more water.
And you'll end up with more dirt somewhere else.
Well, they, they can grass it and.
Dirt somewhere else.
And they put a little silk screen up. So. I mean, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, I think those are separate issues. That culvert's gotta be cleared. No matter what happens with the trees and the grading and all that, that culvert needs to be cleared.
But if we slick that up, there's gonna be more water coming to it. And we could cut those trees down. And they would, even if the, they were still, most of them are still green, so they were sucking up some water. And there was grass out there. Now there's no grass because they've moved around all of it. So we're gonna have a little bit, how much, I don't, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's.
But I think we need to, I really do think we need to do a scope on it and get it back out so that these guys, it's fair to them. I mean, I, again, I don't know if you talked to every one of them like you did this guy where it says discussed. But if you didn't, then it's only fair to the other two guys to.
I think Bob talked to them too.
Yeah.
Sure. And the other ones were grinding. Well, I don't, uh. No, I don't know if these bids. I guess, I don't know if we should go ahead and cut down those, how many are there?
Three.
Go ahead and cut those three and then come back. Because those three, um, if you, if you cut those three down right now, that's gonna, um, increase the, the stumps by three. Well, the one, if I'm understanding correctly, it said remove the three, three as discussed removal and haul off. I think that was one of those additional three to take them down and haul off the trees, take the three.
That might be the three trees. That might be just the stumps for the three trees.
That is what that one was. And then on the other side, it's got the 4,850 for all the other 34 stumps.
Yeah, they're singing names.
Say that it says removal of stumps. I won't, I, I'd rather see. All of them are out there. I'd rather see the, uh, none of them really talk about how many stumps. Yeah, because when you talk to them, you just said.
They cut down the trees. They said, we've cut down enough. I lose money if I cut down any more trees and they haul things. They loaded up everything and went away.
So why didn't we have an actual written contract with these people to cut trees? Because they're right here in their estimate. It says to cut down 26.
36?
26 large pines on the south end of the park are damaged and diseased. The point 26 of the trees should be removed. It didn't say not about the cedar tree, the river birch trees they cut down and counted. That's three trees that are in there.
It was the river birch trees weren't there for trimming. It said the trees.
It says trimming. They cut them down. There's two.
No, they didn't cut down.
There's two stumps over there. Well, there's two stumps down the walkers.
Okay, whatever they were. They're making trees and they did put those down.
Right, so they counted those as three, three of their 26 they cut down. You know, instead of, it says right here they were gonna cut the 26 trees. I think they should, they still have to come back.
Actually, they cut 34.
I didn't count that many stumps when I walked around.
You better count them. You know.
I might go over and do that, but all I'm saying is that this says they were gonna cut down the diseased trees that were to that side of the property. They didn't cut all of them. They didn't cut. They cut down that big cedar tree that wasn't diseased.
That, that was Christmas.
That was our Christmas tree.
Wasn't much of a Christmas tree, but it was a cedar tree.
It might have.
That was the latter.
Charlie Brown was fine.
Old Charlie Brown.
Yeah, in this situation, we should have had a ground track. And it should have gone to our city attorney who's supposed to approve contracts. Because this is 9,750 dollars we spent. And we didn't get our money's worth, I don't think.
I think we got way over our money's worth.
We got over it.
You tried to find somebody to cut down the trees.
Oh, I know. And that's.
If you want to lead it, go get some quotes and bring back some quotes.
All I'm saying is, Mayor, that we sat here and talked about the liability issue of those trees to the point that it got people wanting those trees cut down quick. Well, then suddenly this guy comes in here with this tremendous quote that, yeah, it's, it's bad. And it took, to me, what we've ended up with, they got cut down alright, but, but, uh, you know, he didn't cut down the, the three worst, hardest trees over there. It's miraculous that he didn't cut those. He loaded it up and left, you know? And I, and I thought when we ran into him, we would agree.
If you can sit here and talk like that all you want, it's not true. So, you know, I'm really tired of listening.
Our, our mayor, I'm not.
We're gonna move on to something else.
I can talk as long as I want to.
He can't. I'm, I'm, me.
Heath, don't we have a, in our, you are supposed to review contracts. This never got a contract.
That is a contract.
I mean, it was, we got quotes. You voted for it. We voted, you voted for it. And you also approved this company for the work.
And it's supposed to be a contract to be signed.
We took quotes. We took, I don't know about a contractor, but we took quotes. We got bids in and we approved what we wanted to use. I'm not sure why you're saying a contract. We're not doing a yearly contract with a tree company. And that's what this, the county or the city attorney would have to approve.
You interpret the terms anyway. Just so you look good.
I get so tired of it. I bet you do. But maybe you should.
Alright, so, um, next item.
What was that?
That was Memorial Tree Planning Project. Oh, wait, finish this. Um, part of the things that we have to look at is if we do grind the stumps, we do have two quotes for stump grinding only. But if we do that in talking to some landscapers, and I guess you'd call them landscape architects, people that plan projects, it would be very difficult to allow replanting these trees. The, the vision is to have a memorial park where citizens can have trees planted in memory of loved ones. Either trees, azaleas, uh, some kind of shrubs, you know, and we'll have a landscape planner decide what can go where. And then the citizens can decide what that fits in there they would like to have planted in memory of their loved one. And we want to be able to make that work. If we grind them, there's some concern about replanting, how easy it would be to replant.
In a pine.
Yeah, without having to avoid roots and.
Do we need some kind of motion whether we go to grind or?
Well, and that's what we're talking about now is, is the benefits of if you want to grind, grind a lot of stumps.
I, I haven't heard anything good about grinding them.
Yeah, the only, the only good thing.
So I think we all, I think we'd be better off looking at somebody that can, I mean, dig them up. And while they're at it.
I wouldn't.
Drainage.
And if we need, if we need some kind of formal action on that, I'd be glad to start it.
I think we need to write it up properly and, and put it out.
This estimate does cover the 36 trees or stumps that says up there at the top right of them.
Yep.
I don't think there's a question about that.
Well, there's actually 40, right there.
36. There was 34 cut and then plus the two make, then make 36.
Well, but we got three more, so that's 37.
That's true. That's right. I don't think that was included in those. But that's on the other side.
But like I said, I just think we need to, the expect, expectations of what they're gonna do is all I'm saying. Not just, not just the removal of the stump, but to bring in dirt, to fill it, backfill it and all that stuff.
Yeah, they didn't seem to think we had to bring in dirt. They said that there would be enough that they could rough grade it. Um, they, they would shake the dirt off as much as possible off every stump that they pull out and return that dirt and rough grade it and level it out.
That's what I said. That's what I thought.
Some of those stumps. It is a little bit. There's three, some of the three, it's called holes over there. And, um, actually I put two of them back up this week because we had some people ask if they could play. And so they only had to play with the six remaining holes. I said I can put two of them back up right now. So I went and put those two up. The third one up there I couldn't because they had to pull the, the base out of the ground in order to drop one of the trees that was right next to it.
They put one in big trash cans from the V and put it up there.
They hadn't thrown it in. They had a good, they had a good lot easier, wasn't it?
I think we need a motion to, to, for the bids, write something up so that we're all singing off, so that the contractors are singing off the same page. To make it fair to them.
Do we want to get the three trees cut first?
Well, those three trees been sitting there two months. I don't suspect they're gonna, just. I don't think they're gonna fall any day now. But I, I, I just think we need to, it's only fair to the guys that are gonna be quoting them. If, if somebody forgets something and then, and then we go, wait a minute, you were supposed to do this. And then we've got nothing to stand on.
Okay.
Well, I got one quote that's got everything on it though. The lights were done, but, um, if we want to, wait, we can do that.
There is a quote that has removing the three pine trees and grinding 40 stumps. You get asked if the price would be different for pulling them out.
But that's grinding. And, and that, and again, that's not fair to go back. We go back to other guys that say, hey, you wanna grind? So like I said, I don't, I don't understand why we have an affliction with simply saying, this is what we expect of you. Please price it. I mean, it's like going to the grocery store and you get two watermelons and they're eating so much dollars each. And you can compare it to go to Kroger or Walmart or whoever it is.
Is, is that, is your motion that?
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, do some sort of expect, I don't know if it's a scope, but at least a, uh, outline of all the work that needs to be done. And if they check all the boxes, we'll consider them. If they dump, we won't.
Are you gonna write that?
If I need to. I wrote the other one and it got kinda, but I'll be glad to do it again.
As long as it's for this job, not for a year-long contract.
Well, I think.
What did this one miss that I'm missing?
Which one? Mo?
The M, yeah, what, M and E or Mo or whichever, Middle Georgia Environmental. Because to me, it looks like they have everything on there and at a better price. They have cutting the three existing trees and removing those stumps and removing all of the other 36 stumps.
It says rough grade. And that's not what I would have. It, it needs to be finished grade. And, and again, we just talked about, and I think even Carol Sucker did, yes. We've got to get down to that drain on the exit of the park and do some work there so the additional flow of water, since there are no trees to slow it down, that while they're at it, and then the, the county could come out and clean out the pipe. But we need to get the water down there so it flows. I mean, I can go rough grade it. I can go get it, uh, skid steer, but that's not gonna get it to flow where it needs to go.
But do you wanna, I'm just, don't you wanna landscape or do the, what you're talking about?
No, just to, we're talking about a grade only. We're not talking about putting any trees in. Well, it, it's gonna have to be grassed and with silk screen and stuff to keep it from, I mean, we're in the fall now. Only thing that's gonna grow is winter rock. So we throw ryegrass on it, at least for the time being. At least it'll stabilize it. And then we won't have much else to do. And then it has to come spring when it's time to plant trees. It's good to go. Why do it twice?
Then put the pickleball courts in.
I don't know if we can grow pickles here or not. But I mean, so, I mean, if, if, if I need to make a motion, though dump, that's what we'll do. But I just think that's the fairest thing to do to all concerned us. If we do a rough grade and then next fall with all the rain, we got ruts in it, what we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to come back and have to do it again.
I hope that we get the landscaping done prior to that time and get some trees in there and some grass for them. I just think that, uh, the con, well, they, they may do that kind of stuff too. If they're saying companies that are removing the three stumps and doing the three work are probably not the companies to do the finished grading they have mentioned.
Well, then we don't want to.
The three trees are a safety issue. The stumps are just, they're not a safety issue.
Yeah, it's keeping us from being able to.
The trees are. And then come back and get somebody to dig them stumps up and haul them.
So that's my, so do we want to get quotes down on those three trees?
We only have one in front of us.
Then everybody's got all the. I think it's gonna, it's just my personal opinion. I think it's gonna cost it, cost the city a lot more money. Because we found out in a way how piecey the works. We got a guy that gave the 97.50. We got another seven or eight grand we gotta go. And if we had one that met all the, the checkboxes before, we might not be spending this money because they would have appreciated maybe a couple more days of work. I don't know that. But I'm just saying, I mean, that's the way bids typically work. I've done enough on, on the, on the other end, not this end. But I think we could, I think we'll save ourselves some money in the long run. But I'll make that motion that we'll write a scope so it gets all been done.
We won't put a Tom Frank so we can wait to get this done. That's what we said you're about.
What, what are you saying, Tom? Do what now? I think we need to get somebody, if they can, do it all. If we can't, we'll pull the tree cutting down. But the rest of it needs to be in one chore.
I agree with that part of it initially.
But the trees.
It's not the safety issue. The safety issue of the trees, not them all.
I don't disagree, but they've been there for two months since we started this discussion. So, and. I mean, whatever, like I said, if nobody wants a second, we'll back up, but either way, the trees have got to come down and then we gotta get the rest of it done. And we paid 97.50 for a buttload of trees to get cut down. Pardon me, I almost forgot we was on video. And, uh.
That's an excellent executive instinct.
And, uh, 3,600 now for just three. That's a third.
Wow, we got a good deal.
Simple math.
Yeah, that's a different company. And, and we could ask the same ones who cut down the.
I was gonna ask, did we not ask, I mean, they do all that work and they didn't even want to give us a price?
I'm sure they, they will. In fact, they said that if, if we want them to come back and bid, they will.
What's their daily rate? 32.50?
Or is that, if a day for a day?
Well, then they, they can get three trees down a day. That's cheaper than 3,600 bucks we got sitting in front of us, isn't it?
Yeah.
And maybe probably a little less than that. I mean, that'd be like half a day work then probably.
One of these.
Did we not call them or did, did we call them and they say no? We're losing our shorts on it.
I was waiting to see what everybody wanted to do. Because we had some bids. We put out for bids for this and one of the biddies, forbidders also had in there for removing the trees. I was waiting to see what we decided. I contacted them.
Trees for 2,350 dollars. Well, Holbrook says they'll do 2,350 to cut them down.
Alright, so that's even less.
When did we get there?
I think the other trees or Southern Pride ended up being like 325 dollars a tree.
Oh, it's a cheap for a day.
One just to get the trees down. Yes. Yeah, that one was cut down the trees and removed the stumps on those three.
In a rough rate.
I'm talking about this 3,600 dollars.
Yes, that's to remove the three trees.
The other side was to pull all the other stumps.
I'm just asking, this is.
Yes.
Three pine trees. Do we have any, uh, uh, data estimates on it? When can they get through it in other words?
The other guy's two months.
I'm sorry.
We just found out to remove, now this will work to remove three pine trees at the corner.
And they're grinding the stump.
Cut and remove. That's cut and remove the trees.
The trees, not the stumps.
Yeah, that's just to remove the trees.
Right.
Right.
That's 2,300 dollars. That is, uh.
So in the day's market, that's not bad. It's going rates about 1,200 dollars a tree.
So that would be the.
36.
Well, the man doesn't say he's gonna haul it off or anything. That's the scary part.
That's why I'm saying.
You gotta get them.
You can't just let him guess.
He just says I'm gonna cut trees.
And remove.
And remove.
Yes, it does.
I'm gonna rescind my motion for the time being.
That's the grind stumps.
No, it's the very first part.
Where's the horse that says cut?
Cut and remove.
Remove three?
Cut and remove three pine trees.
Right.
But not the stumps.
No, right.
Grind 40 stumps is.
But right.
Because he's count, I think he's counting those additional three in this 40 count.
That's what we're.
And a couple of those. Yeah.
Yep.
We, we need to.
We'd have to ask him if he put that in as part of the entire bid for 5,600. We could ask him if he would do just the trees for that else.
Because like I said, we don't know.
That's it? That's only two bids for cutting trees.
What are you doing for it?
Yes.
No, the tree trees, yeah.
No, they say remove. There's three.
C and E trees.
All of them say they'll remove the trees.
They have a secret.
Yeah.
My nose.
Yeah.
But we don't know what the rest of it is.
We lived it three, nine, three.
Yeah.
Little Georgia's is 3,600. C and E says 3,500. And Holbrook says 2,350.
I think they will, but I think it was also.
There's a separate one.
The whole book is the two.
Something nice doing.
Get rid of three trees.
You know, why?
I'm flipping those stumps up and doing them.
They are long too.
And that's a lot.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Alright.
Because see, they're talking.
I'm not the motion. We get Holbrook Tree Service to come out here and cut down those three trees. Get them down, clean up, and then we'll come back and take care of the stumps and the drain. The, the drain.
So.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I did.
For Holbrook?
Yeah, they're cheaper.
Okay.
Just for, just to cut and remove the three pine trees. We'll have to verify they will do that because that was part of their larger bid for 5,600 dollars. So it would be to verify they would still come out and do those three trees for 2,350.
I think there'll be three of them.
Well, I'll second it.
Got that motion in a second for the discussion. All in favor?
Or, or?
That was easy.
Hey, Mayor, what's, what's the plan going forward on the stumps?
We don't know.
Yeah, now that's gonna be the next thing. We want a, uh.
While we go ahead and just, I'll try to go ahead and do a scope since the stuff, we don't even know if he's gonna get the trees. I'll try to do the scope, which will, uh, get the drain at least. I'll try to do the scope, which will, uh, get the drain, at least the grade, the drain toward the front of the, uh, toward, uh, Williams and Zevon Road. We'll dig a hole. Do we know if that drain pipe underneath there has collapsed or?
I think it's still open. It's just filled up with leaves and silk. I think it is true running.
So why don't we get, no offense, why don't we get the county to come out there and open that puppy up before we get them to do anything? As far as grading, so they know where they got to go. And that'll, that'll designate.
We'll talk with them tomorrow.
I can do that.
Family, do you remember Holbrook? Was that the one that had done some work up here at, uh, Peach State?
No, sir.
Cause that guy said he was available anytime. Was that?
We should have on everything.
We need to verify their insurance too. Yeah, they're obviously talking about it.
Yeah. This was out of the land, uh. Yeah, was that guy that I, that had called me and then told him to come down and see you?
Middle Georgia's out of Barnsley.
Did you get the call?
Cards?
Yeah. Yeah, cause that guy was one, it sounds like he could do it.
I don't think I ever saw him.
Okay.
This guy is Stormbray, he's a bit come out one hundred and four. He did on. Your report, thanks.
You know?
No.
Like I said, it's not the one that was talking about the tree work. Cause that guy sounded like he was eager and ready and he can come do it. I don't know if he actually put in the.
Nice move, Tom.
We only got two bids to remove the trees. If you don't use one, you get the other.
Well, we, he was gonna call back the other dude too.
Well, I called Southern Pride too and just say, well.
I mean, he's already, he's already been, been out there. Does he have a bucket? I think that's, that, if, if he's got a bucket that, I thought he didn't have one. I thought that might have been why he didn't get those three, or hang the three.
Let's see. This is who I were talking and might get an answer back before you.
You want, what? You say you did it, don't you?
Bob, did your motion include if they're not willing to do it, an alternative? In here? Did your motion include an alternative if these folks aren't willing to do it?
Hmm, no.
There's motion.
The blessing. No, my motion was basically, uh.
To use Holbrook, right?
Yeah, because they were cheaper. I didn't have an alternative. I didn't have a motion. I, did we vote yet?
Do we wanna do that? It might be a good idea just in case.
I'm making a motion to have a minute. Do I need a minute?
You can rescind that and then start.
I'd like to amend my motion to say if we, if Holbrook does not agree to cut down those three trees for twenty-three fifty, we use, uh.
C and E.
Middle Georgia Environmental out of Barnsley to cut down those three trees as discussed.
Or Southern Pride?
Or Southern Pride.
Yeah, whatever's the cheapest.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Got that motion and second round of discussion. All in favor? Or, thank you. We might have something back here. I just texted Southern Pride and see if they would give us a vote on those other three.
Mayor, uh, the gentleman that has asked to speak, he's got to go. Can we move him up?
Sure, absolutely. I'll, I'll make motion this time to amend the agenda, uh, for the public comment before the paper. And we can move it up to now if you want.
I'll make that motion.
The under new business, the new, the under the.
Well, I mean, if he needs to go, we can, we can put it in right now.
I'll second that motion.
Got that motion.
All in favor?
All in favor.
There we go.
Okay, so we've got Corey Day regarding two seventy-one Old Fable Road.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I apologize.
That's okay. I understand. These things can bag on.
So, um, my name's Corey Day. Um, I've been a Pike County resident for, right, twenty years. Been living since this two thousand and eighteen, living in Concord. But my son lives right here on Old Fable Road. Um, and so the goal was, my mother-in-law to get to live somewhere close. Um, she's a widow, she's been living with us since the 11th of nineteen, which is not her goal or ours. So when the opportunity came up to purchase, um, the house in two seventy-one, we were really excited for her and for us. It was not to the standard that we wanted her to be able to live in. So, um, at first, we thought that we were just going to do electrical service work out only, take all the electrical out in place that it was unsafe. As anybody knows, it's done any kind of building, gotta open up and doors lock sometimes. Another house nineteen thirty-one, so it's got some years on it. When we redid Bonnie's house that we bought, my son lives in, we earned a little bit.
Which is beautiful, by the way.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So anyway, um, we discovered some really unsafe situations. One of them was the sloop that you guys referenced, but that was the, the step tread heights to come. You're not supposed to exceed seven foot quarters. You're not supposed to vary more than three eights from one rise to the other. These were eleven inches. Um, and my, and my mother-in-law's eighty. So we took that off and the plan was to just replace it. Of course, she used a place to sit and enjoy. So we just did it. I had, honestly, I've been building almost thirty years. I had no idea that I would have to get a permit for that because it's self-supported. It's sitting on casters because the septic tank area is there. So I didn't wanna put any holes in the ground. Though, I mean, whatever that means. I wasn't trying to get away with it at all.
Well, you mentioned electrical. You actually pulled a permit to do the electrical and you pulled a permit to do the plumbing.
Yeah, we ran into the plumbing issues. Replaced all the plumbing in the house, ended up replacing the entire septic system. Of course, I got a permit for that. So, um, we did the deck. The fence of Pike County, while we were doing permits, didn't know it had to have a fence. If you don't have a fence, well, then, my mistake again. So anyway, I just, you know, I live here. This is our home, son's home, mother-in-law. I just don't want anybody to think that we're trying to get away with something because that was not our intent. But, um, I don't know if there's a way for us to go leave what we've got. We have to tear it down. We have to tear it down. We got about sixty grand in what we've done so far for to live there.
Yeah, and it looks really good. And we, and we are, we'll be talking about that some later. But we are doing whatever we have to do to make it right so you don't have to tear that down. Our existing code needs some work and it may involve us having a zoning, um, procedures meeting and changing our ordinance. Because I've talked to the county, had a lot of discussions. Almost no county still have that clause in there that says, if you build something without a permit, that you have to tear it down, get a permit and rebuild it. That's how some places used to be. That's how ours is. Uh, most have gone to you either pay double what the original permit would have been, or a percentage of the cost of the project or something like that. And then you just get it inspected and we go on. I like that much, much better. I, I think it's ridiculous to tear down beautiful work that you did on that just to put it back again because of paperwork. Partially because you were told in the beginning, you did not need a permit for that because the county was under the impression you were just replacing the concrete sloop. But again, you made a nice deck out there. And when, then when they saw it, they went like, oh no, he's got a big deck that had to have rails around it. And now it's gotta meet building code. And they got to inspect it. So that's when they told us that you had to have a permit because they had to come out and inspect it and they can't do that unless they have a building permit. So we got all wrapped up in that. And we are doing our best to find a way to give you a permit to go forward with that. So don't tear anything down. Don't do any of that. We're gonna try to do the legwork. It's probably gonna involve having a zoning, but you gotta have a public hearing before you change your zoning ordinance. And we gotta advertise that between fifteen and forty-five days in the paper. And then we have a public hearing. So, and tell people we're gonna make a text amendment to our zoning code to change that where we cannot accept a permit, period, if you're not in compliance to, if you have done something without a permit, then this is the limit. And so that's what we're, I think, I can't speak on behalf of all the council, but that's what I feel needs to happen. And so after we have the public hearing, then we will meet probably at our next meeting and say, okay, we're making this change to our ordinance. And what the county attorney, I talked to him about it a little bit too, since it's involving county and city. He said that we could go ahead and accept the application for a variance, whether we approve it or not. In fact, he's under the impression that we can't approve it. Then your next step would be to appeal our action. It used to be we had a board of appeals to do that. And cities don't do that anymore. It has to go to superior court, which is another hassle. So we could officially deny the variance because right now our ordinance says we can't accept it. So we would deny the variance. You would submit a request to appeal. But before that appeal ever gets heard, we will change our ordinance to a way that we can live with. So that's the plan. And I've talked to the county about that. They like that plan. I apologize. Uh, I have not run it through the city attorney in detail. But that's the plan that looks like it's gonna work the best. It will fix our ordinance. So we won't have this problem going forward. It will fix it. So you don't have to tear down the deck, you know, and it will fix it so that Pike County can come and inspect that deck now and see the work that you did and know that everything's okay. So that's the best answer. The fence might be a whole nother issue. We're not worried about that right now. I want to get the deck thing solved, you know, because what happens with the deck, if it was built and it was of a height that required the rail, would you put on it? And if someone got hurt and they came back and said, well, there wasn't a permit issued and it wasn't inspected, I want you to be protected. Saying that no county inspected it and they're good with it. So I want that to happen as soon as possible. So I'm more concerned about that really right now than I am the fence. And so if we can get this done, then we'll just keep moving forward and knocking these out. Cause my intent is not to have you just tear down anything, rebuild anything. My intent is for us to change our ordinances to a more simple way of doing things. Because particularly in a case like yours, you've got vested property rights. You've, you were purchasing that property. You have spent whatever amount of money building that under the belief that you could do that. So you've got a vested interest in that property. And that factors a little bit into the way the OCGA, um, considers property rights and zoning regulations. Now, that was a recent change. In fact, I think you missed that conference recently. But I talked to some of the attorneys that went there and that was a big discussion item. And so I sort of went into that when I was looking at your papers with it. And I think with all that being said, this is gonna be the best way to handle it.
So I just hold tight?
Just hold tight. Don't run anybody in or out. Don't tear anything down and let us work on it. So I think, I think we can come to something that's gonna be good for everybody.
While Jake was there doing our final inspection, he looked at the deck and said, man, it's fine. Good. I didn't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you hanging out and enduring this much of the meeting.
Thanks, y'all.
Thanks for everything you do. Thanks for other work you've done in the city too. All right, back to where we was. Old Fable Road Payable Project Company. Not having it up there. We're waiting for a little more specs unless you have seen something from Mark.
I have heard nothing outside of Mark giving the estimated quote. It was mine, we're staying in the process with an engineer needed to come in, assess the situation to what we needed, then use the county specs and what we needed to create a scope of work.
Right.
And then we would use that scope, or the engineer would use that scope depending on what we worked out with the engineer. So then put it out for bid, like we did with the water line. Same process for a road.
And that was what I talked to Mark about. And he's an engineer and he was gonna oversee that process and getting that done, whether or not we needed to involve Carter and Sloop or another engineering firm. You know, if we had to bid, like one engineering firm says it's gonna cost this much to do the engineering study, that was something else. But I'll get back with Mark because I understood that he was gonna present something toward, to us for an engineering study quote. But apparently we haven't seen that.
The last thing was just the price.
Okay.
Well, piggyback on now a little bit, after vision streets like, um, Prusher Circle and, or Second, whatever gets paid. Is there, um, a way we can kind of keep, you know, like no big trucks or is there a certain weight limit of the truck?
Yeah, in fact, almost every street in the city, other than Williamson Zevon Road and Highway three sixty-two are no through truck. Actually, Williamson Zevon's no through truck road. And so the only through truck road in the city is Highway three sixty-two. All other roads, if there's a truck on it, it needs to be making a delivery, a pickup or doing something on that city street.
And then I think most of the damages are coming from big dump trucks and.
And that's the hardest part is enforcement.
Hauling heavy equipment. And, um, I mean, is there signage we can put up or do or?
We have no.
How do we pay for roads?
I'll have to see and see them get used.
Yeah. But if we can't enforce it, we don't need to be able to go through all that.
Yeah, well, it's like the speed limit. You know, we don't enforce the speed limits. We rely on our sheriff's office to enforce. Um, we can try to, you know, get the county to enforce some of these other ordinances. We know that.
Citizens are reps.
Yeah. We, we know that it's not a popular thing, you know, when you catch people for speeding, it doesn't get votes. But when you bust a drug house or something, that does.
We're gonna spend a lot of money.
Yeah.
Get it fixed, Mark.
Yeah. Well, hopefully it wouldn't be approved. I know we see them because of GPS. People would get routed on the Old Fable and try to make the turn in front of Carol's house and run into the ditch. We've seen that when they weren't going, they weren't intending to go anywhere on Old Fable Road. But they got GPS over there. But yeah, we will work on that because I agree.
I mean, after.
Yeah, I agree. We need to maintain our roads as much as we can, prevent them unnecessary wear of them. In fact, we're gonna talk about a little more personal work here in just a minute. But first, a new pitting table for the memorial park. We've got the pitting table kits in. I bought a lumber for it. Chris Avery has agreed to build it. And so as soon as he can get it built, it'll be done. If he can't get it soon, my son and I can knock it out. But we've built three of my, I think, of the park off the same frame. So, you know, and we can do it. But Chris had volunteered to do it and that freed me up to work on the locks at the restrooms and other things I've been working on instead of building the table. But I don't mind building it at all.
I can have them tables.
Thank you. It's just metal frame and you put down the five two by tens and carriage bolts and it's done. It's really, it's really pretty easy. It's just getting it through. The lumber is right here by the door. The frame is right there by that door. And all the hardware and the instructions are right there with the frame box. So that's the tree limbs on Prusher Circle. I drove it again this morning. Um, I drove it after we did the trimming because I wanted to make sure, the complaint was that the tree limbs were scraping the school bus. Did we ever hear back from the barn?
I have, like, voicemails. I've sent multiple emails. I've.
Yeah, that, that's what I understood is that we had not received anything back. So I drove it again this morning. And in driving it in my F-150, I was trying to imagine if I was a school bus or something, it's easier for me to imagine if I'm driving a fire engine, because I do that all the time, could I get through that road without hitting these tree limbs? Yes. If I wanted to drive on maybe the right side going that way, I'd probably hit some. But if I, it's pretty much a one-lane road. It's not marked right and left. So there is room to get all the way around that in a school bus, in a fire truck, in a garbage truck without hitting limbs.
By the way, if you look back a year ago, just about to date, we had the same kind of discussion.
Yep. Cause like they would not, um, draw a hall for pickup kids on that road. And we trimmed, we had, well, we had Pike County control.
First, it's cause the potholes were itself by that. They wasn't ever.
Yeah, didn't they? And we fixed that, yeah.
What did you say, Mark?
Well, I just, I watched the school bus again come down Old Fable and then turn on three sixty-two. And, uh, I don't, it kind of changed my feelings about jewelry street. They made it one way. I guess that's why, I don't know if you made it one way coming from Southern, all emergency, put all the emergency people to go down that road. If the school bus goes down that road, I don't know. Cause nobody lives, I mean, there was nobody going to school on that. But I don't know who does the bus routes. but I don't know who does the bus routes. And because I know they probably never called here and says, hey, what do y'all, you know, if we willy-nilly to just change the road, how would it affect them? Or how could we make the bus driver and the kids and people going up and down 362 safer? I mean, is there a way you can meet with them or express that concern?
Yeah, if we decided, if we were going to change the, change the traffic flow pattern, we would need to meet with, say, the school buses, maybe the garbage truck drivers, the mail carrier, and just say, hey, we're looking at the traffic flow pattern, how's this going to affect you? Or just to let you know we're going to do it.
You know, another thing I'm very, I've noticed there's a fire ladder halfway down it, I really don't think we ever shut that road all the way down. I think it's taking one water supply away from that area if we did.
There's one right across 362, like you go up that gory and then go right across 362, there's a hydrant there, and then there's the one that's back-
On the old Fable.
Yeah, on the old, near the old Fable side. And then there is one right there on Fable, that backs up those duplexes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we could definitely always get a engine in there, we wouldn't have any need of retainer because we can definitely lay the hose, they're all really pretty close in there to hide, there's nobody that's going to be very far away from them. But that is a good consideration to always take gamble with a street closure like that is how it affects. It's like, you know, safety services.
There's one way, it wouldn't matter.
Right, right.
I'd totally shout it all the way down.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, there's multiple buses coming through there, one turns off Old Fable and goes down towards Homble and 362.
So it comes like from Zebulon and Old Fable and then comes across 362, comes down Old Fable this way. Okay.
Well, I meant it today. And I just, I was just sitting there watching that bus, I don't, it used to not come to, it used to not come to 362, they used to come up 362 down here and went that way and lit the kids off at the top of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, I don't, they, they changed, it looks like, every time I look up, I don't know what bus I'm looking at as to what-
Right.
...routes are.
Right, is it high school, elementary, middle?
Yeah, I don't know. I get Brian and find out, is there a way to go look and see how they drive, you know, how the route is going?
I'm sure they have a route mapped out, they always call.
Well, probably that and the, probably have a public meeting too for the citizens to see if they agree with it as well.
I think they did. I'll change it from behind on that, make it safe. All right, next item, G speed hump ordinance, second reading. We didn't have any recommended changes after the first one, there was an example taken from the city of Zebulon ordinance, modified a little bit for the city of Williamson. We had talked about making a few changes about percentages of subdivision boats, whatever, did anybody see anything else that, or any changes that you wanted to make to that?
Now, this is just for the speed hump?
Yes.
And not that special tax-
Yeah.
-district or whatever that was, just the speed hump.
Yeah, that, that was like an addendum to that, if we wanted to try to pay for speed hunts in a special district, Olivia District on the neighborhood or area that was wanting speed bumps. And there is a provision where we, we could do that at a later time, we could attach that to a, a method, like if, if we did want to come in and have speed bumps added to their area, then there would be a provision.
Well, now, my opinion on that is that we're all here, you know, we're all in it together, so I'll have to really get some feedback on whether or not the special tax thing would be the thing to do for the, like what somebody said, you know, stop sign gets tore down on the winds and drive, we all pay, everybody's paying for that, and so.
Yeah, it's like the people in Williamson, the race don't have street lights, they pay for the street lights nationally.
Yeah. Why don't, yeah, why don't we give them-
I make a motion, we accept the speed bump project as written.
Take it. Got a motion in a second to accept the speed bump ordinance as written? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'll get you a copy of that and I'll say anything.
You don't intend to have them, I think so.
That's it. We mark that off the list.
Won't say it again, hopefully.
Well, yeah, we won't say it again until we have a request for him. We'll follow that ordinance. All right, next item, trunk and treat fall festival planning, coming up on the 25th of October, there's a lot of interest this year, I've heard a lot of conversations about it, the Church of Joy has a big signup sheet with a lot of people wanting to put trunks in, we've had some local new citizens come and ask about it, I'm trying to think where was I, just heard some other people talking about it, they were going to be there.
Well, you heard Beverly saying they're not going to participate.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine on that.
Yeah, there's Scrooges, no, that's Christmas when the Scrooge is, I don't know what it is, if you don't-
It's the 25th, Saturday the 25th from 5 till 7, and I'm afraid I have not done-
Saturday, October 25th.
That's correct.
Have not done much planning for it.
I've been trying to work on some planning for it, really I'm trying to get all the planning I can done for it early because I do have another engagement that day, I'm teaching over in Eaton's in Georgia, and I won't be done, I'm scheduled to be done over there at 5, which is when our trunk and treat starts, and it takes an hour and a half to get back from there. So if I can cut my training short over there, I'll get back earlier, but otherwise, I'm trying to get everything done and planned and nailed down ahead of time so that it will run smoothly. And my family, of course, will come out and help, and we have some other people to beat up and too, so we can get it all planned. It should go well. It's sort of a, you know, build it and they will come type of thing, if you pull in a bunch of trucks, trunks, and back them up to the walking trail and decorate them, and if we advertise it that it's out there, kids come, we usually have two or three thousand, you know, kids that'll come through and get canned.
Should we back up the town on that, it's awful dark, 7 o'clock now.
We got lights out there.
Lights. What time is sunset now?
I mean, that's when we-
Last light is here.
It's when it's been hell.
That's what I'm thinking. Let's see, sunset I hear, sunrise sunset. And I can put in the-
Daylight savings time change is November 2nd.
Okay, all right. Yeah, right now it's not dark until 7:45.
Day of the dead, let's see what it is.
I got 6:52. Okay, there you go. That's for sunset, not dark.
Sunset.
Sunset.
Okay.
After dark.
Okay.
Sunset, yeah. Thirty minutes, thirty minutes. Right now it's still looking good, and I'll try to get back as soon as I can on that day and try to change some stuff now.
Okay, so 25th-
Well, tell me what I need to do.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about the trunk and treat fall festival planning? Generally, people back up, open their trunk, decorate them all up, wear costumes, decorate their tractors, whatever it is that they use, front end loaders, whatever, and it's all a bunch of planning. I might have some people that just want to come up, get together and play music on the stage-
That would be fabulous.
-inside this table for them to be on.
And there's fireball.
Yes, and there's fireball. There was one year anyway, hopefully not again.
We never will live that back.
We never will. We lost church participation for a couple of years because of that. All right, next, review of water superintendent contract, that's in your folder. It's been a while since we reviewed it and updated it, there was a pay increase a few And this is the updated TRW Services LLC contract.
Did we talk to, has it been presented?
He created it.
Yeah, this was done by him.
This is stuff.
And it did include, what we discussed about 10 council meetings quarterly to include March, June, September, and December each year, that was requested by the council, and we did add that on there. And provide monthly reports to the clerk.
Annual 10 quarterly meetings, if needed.
Yes, it's in there. It's number 14.
Yeah.
That's good.
Did you review it? I know you reviewed the water.
Many things I liked about it is there was-
Let's go.
Termination clause.
Yes.
Early date termination clause, you know, side.
I think that's good, make a motion to accept the city of Williamson and TWR, TRW Services LLC water contract.
I'll second.
Not to execute the contract on this date in a second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
For O. Amphitheater completion status, all right, something we weren't know for a long time. I spoke to a few contractors during wave one again today, if I had some hard numbers here, I would have presented to you tonight. Ron Johnson, who has had that really good bid that he gave us in June of last year, it's a little over a year old now, with him and said, hey, is this still good? Or what will be, how much has it increased basically for the same thing? And he had to look it over a while, look at some mid-price increases, and said, it's going to have to go up. And he said, I've still got to nail down a few of my costs, was his words, but he guaranteed that it would not go over 50,000. And I still think that's a very good job, his, his quote from before was 32-
37,000 and change.
And he said it would not go over 50 for the same thing, so that's what he's working on right now, and I hope to have something in the next day or two, you know. There's another company called Lusk Contractors that is very interested in helping out. I have sent them all of the drawings, all the material list that we had from before, and they are very interested in getting a quote to us. They are commercial contractors, they do a lot of things like this, they do other amphitheaters and other facilities, so it sounds very promising, I have no idea where the price points are going to come in, but I spoke to their company last week, and their two principals, their president and their CEO were on vacation. I talked to one of their engineers and he said, you know, I gave him some info, and he said, call the bosses when they get back, I talked to them this week and again this morning, and sent some more material for them to review, but they're very interested in giving us a quote, but I don't have one from them yet. I have talked again to Skindable Ways, or Sam Ways now, they still want to help sponsor and put up some cash for the completion of this, and they said they had another business partner that wanted to also partner with us on this. So they both said, first, we need numbers, and we understand that, so I'm hoping to get some numbers, so I wish I had them tonight, I tried to push them a little bit this week to get numbers to us, but nobody had them ready for tonight, but as soon as I get them, I will give them to you.
And those will be sealed bids, correct? 50,000 or more?
Yeah, they'll just, they'll give us whatever their quote is, sealed, the other bidders won't know what they're doing.
And the other, I want to make sure that, because I've heard certain things, the amphitheater has not been delayed by any human being. Amphitheater's been delayed by folks promising to sponsor it, donate it, I mean, we've been waiting for, I remember us talking about it when we were out there at the V during COVID, and we ended up putting the stage up, proved that, and then we were waiting and waiting, at first it was Southside Steel, then I think it was our garbage folks, and they came back, they got bought out or whatever the deal was, nobody's ever voted against completing the amphitheater. We have never gotten, we still, probably what, five years later, four years later, it's still waiting on a price. It's hard to vote something down if you don't have a price on it. So that's, I just want to make sure that that's clear, if we get a price and it makes sense, that's what we'll do. It's not, in fact, last month, I think we talked about, because of the delays, we were supposed, when we met in July, the next day, we met on July the 10th, on July the 11th, we were supposed to get an update from Ron, and here it is October the 2nd, and we just now assume we're going to get it. But the bottom line is, is we talked about doing sales, that way we could use it temporarily, and then we could move the sales out to the yard for the, for the patrons.
Is that a motion?
As Bob said, and I don't know what the cost is on that, but-
Pamela does.
Well, without actual dimensions, the guy quoted one of those tent sales, it's a 40 by 28, about 25,000, that doesn't include taxes, it doesn't include permits, and no engineer drawings, nothing, just guesstimate off the cuff without coming out and looking, $25,000 for a sale.
So that was a swag.
A 40 by 28.
Yeah, that was a swag, okay. But all I'm saying is, is we've talked about making it where it fits into our budget, but I mean, we ended up spending between the decks and everything else, we spent a third of our annual budget on this thing, but we've tried to make it fit because we still don't know what the usage of it's going to be, and that's a ton of money to pour in there, and if it works, that is great. If it don't, we've got an Almatraz system over there. So that's all I'm saying, we got, this is not my money to spend, it's the taxpayers' money to spend, and I'd rather do it on a, on a, on a way that doesn't wound us, so to speak. I know we got money in the bank, but we still shouldn't.
Once it's built, we've got to maintain it too, as far as, you know, which shouldn't be that much to maintain.
Just lots of cameras, I would assume, to keep people from, I mean, we can't even keep the bathrooms from getting waxed at night. I can't imagine what storage in that amphitheater's going to be.
Well, I think-
But hopefully we can lock it good enough.
Like a lot of my past experience, like down there with Parks and Rec and Ballfields, if you can show people where their money is going, they're mostly content. Nobody likes taxes, of course, but if they see it being spent in a positive way for the community, it's hard to knock it, you know, and if people are enjoying it, that's the main thing. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we get a scope and bids for a sale over the stage or whatever, until, and then be able to move that when we get the, when all this other, to build the final dream, and then all you got to do is move four posts, all you got to do.
Maybe six.
Just move it out and people can sit under it. Because spring, summer, and fall's going to be the only times you can use that. And if we could do that now and have it ready, I was hoping we could get it ready by trunk and treat, but I think we can definitely have that done by Wisteria for sure. So that's my motion.
Would you be willing to measure, to see how big we need?
Well, at least I would get a minimum and a maximum.
Right, right. And height and stuff like that, right.
Because you can either make, make it encompass the stage and go outside of it, or you could put the post-
On the corners.
On the corners. Um-
I mean, whatever the recommendation and cost would be from a contractor, because I don't, it's kinda like the playground equipment.
Right, but we have to have some starting place.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah. And we, we've had some estimates, and we also have had some sound and stage people discuss that idea, and the problem is wind going under and back, and yeah, that could be used three seasons, but, and including amphitheaters, we can use four. And to go back a little bit on the talk, uh, about the quotes, on February 4th, 2021, we had a quote from Custer Enterprises of Georgia LLC for the entire amphitheater, $148,360. That was approved by the council when we started building it. We got the stage part of the bill, uh, say the stage, because that's the foundation part, including the stage, the conduits for electrical, the plumbing, um, the water run to it, the septic tank installed, and the drain field installed with the intent of this company completing the entire project. It was stopped. There was a complaint made to the Pike County Department of Health that the septic tank we had installed was not adequate, and there was a stop work order placed out there on deconstruction. When I contacted the director of Pike County Health Department, they said that was ridiculous at home. You wash clothes, you wash dishes, you take showers, you use the bathrooms 24/7. All you're having is a, is two labs that are used occasionally, and the septic tank you have with the drain field is more than acceptable. But the process had already started rolling where we had a stop work order placed out there. When we addressed that, and that was realized, that wasn't a factor, then it was recommended that we had a mechanical or structural engineer do a wind gust loading on it before we went further, and that we had to have a commercial contractor, we couldn't use residential contractor, that we had contracted with the building. So then the attorney said, well, it is allowable for city to be their own general contractor and hire out subs. That wasn't liked by the council, it kept getting wrapped up and muddied up, and so we didn't get anything done. We got an architect firm to come up with a plan, but it was in the millions, um, of dollars or over a million dollars anyway for that to be built. We started again going back and simplifying the plans for the elevated part of the amphitheater, came up with a good plan, sent it to various different people, and got some quotes back. The quote we got on June 6th, 2024, from MRJ Construction, was 3,200, I mean, $32,200 for all the blocking material, the framing and material, the welded frames, the drywall, the electrical painting, the trim and labor material for a project total, again, of $32,200. And then we have contract, where we have talked to some other people about it, we have talked to some donors about it, the county and the community, I'm talking not Pike County, but our area, would like to have this thing done, and I think they want more than just a sun shade up over the top, because we do have it plumbed in for two restrooms. We've got all the plumbing installed, and all the plans show the two labs, one ADA compliant and one regular, and an electrical closet, and then a green room on the other side, so the performing artists can come, store their equipment, come out on stage from there and perform. If we just put a shell, I mean, a shade over the top, you can't do that. There's no wind block, there's no rain block, there's no way to really protect it, um, and have performing artists with their instruments come out on a stage that just has a tarp over the top of it. That is why we have done this, the way that, that it has been talked about and given to respective contractors for a couple of years now. This, um, like I say, I'm waiting on the Lusk contracting to come back, see what they can do. Ron Johnson's coming back with his to build the stage the right way, the way it was planned, with split-faced concrete block on both sides, green room and the lab side to match the foundation that we have there now with a metal truss roof over the top of it. It'll be virtually maintenance-free, and it will be able to be used a lot more during the year than just having a shade over it. I do like the idea of having the shade and moving it out over the audience at some time. I like having the idea of the audience having some shade, but it's just not really feasible for an amphitheater when you're gonna have musical events out there. And I've got multiple, multiple pictures that are different events of musicians set up out there and the sound booth out in the, uh, audience area, and I've sent them to the contractors so they get a feel of how we use the stage.
There's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, it hadn't been a second. I'll say. There's a motion in a second, further discussion.
Can we go back to the motion? I don't remember it now.
It was to, uh, get a quote for the shades.
Yes.
Quote and measurement.
Quote, measuring, measuring quote for the shade. And Pamela has been working on it, she's contacted a few companies, if we do this, and if you write a scope for the, uh, for the shade dimensions and stuff, and then we can get a bid for it.
I'll ask my guy, because he did say that to give a definitive quote, I'll say my guy, I contacted the website from the cell you sent, and this guy responded, um, but he said he could try to come out and take pictures and actually measure it so we can give you an intended, because originally when I talked to him, he was like, oh, yeah, fifty grand. And then when I started sending the pictures and talking about measurements, and it's like, okay, well, maybe 25, we've really gotta come see.
Normally I talk to, it was Chris Young, Chris Young Creek.
Yeah, this is a guy with court cap. It was when I went to the manufacturer of the cell you sent, that's the guy that responded.
My second. All right, we have a motion in a second for getting, uh, a scope and quote for the sun shade cover for the state, for the quote foundation of the amphitheater that we have out there. Any further discussion on the favor? For, all right, thank you. And let's see, we all, we've already covered the vacancy of council member appointed to F.
There is no vacancy.
There is no vacancy now, so that is a moot point. And then the next item was requested sign placement concerns on city streets and roads. That wasn't mine, so whatever, um, this was. I, I will say that originally that said political signs, um, but I did take that off because by First Amendment, we're not allowed to differentiate between what is on the sign, so I just changed it to sign placement. Doesn't matter if it says, uh.
Jesus loves you.
Or my daughter is an honor student, or I do whatever.
Or Georgia Bulldogs.
Or welcome, or Georgia, or Auburn, or whatever, they're still considered signs.
Since you said that on signs, what's, are those signs for, um, 362, Wimson's oven, for school road, is that a dead issue?
No, those are, those are signs for, uh, traffic control, and all those, I'm, I guess we haven't got the school road signs, so I'll get it, it wasn't my.
It got turned over to the county.
So it was turned over to the county, and the county says since it's on state highway DOT, yeah.
I mean, just going by the, the thing that you sent out.
That's what I'm talking about, the, uh, you sent out the emails, got the list of all the faction hours.
Yeah, the last thing, it was.
Just the first one.
Yeah, and that was, we had no say in it, the DOT told me the county had to write a letter, Rob Morton had thought that the county did write a letter, the city's not involved.
I did, I did ask the county manager again last week when I talked about it, and he said they passed it, they wanted to do it.
So, I mean, DOT was about like that roundabout, we'll get the sign the same time.
Yeah.
So. The only question I have, I pulled this up while we sat here, and if, if we need to change our municipal code, let's change it.
Our mun, our municipal code?
Because it says political signs.
It does, there's, there's some things.
And until we change that, to my knowledge, we can't just willy-nilly sit here and go, well, you can't have a Georgia sign, because that's, that's not advertising for anything.
It's not us willy-nilly, it's state codes that supersedes that in that situation.
What state code?
Like, if we said that.
What state code is?
You know the signs code?
The state doesn't have assigned ordinance, but they do talk about Second Amendment, uh, I mean, First Amendment, see, First Amendment, uh, rights when it comes to signing.
Well, they show a block up near a voting precinct, so I, I can't see how they could say that.
Election law, within 100 feet of the polling place, there are some, uh, there are some requirements, there are some things that the election, the state election code does.
I'd like to get some clarification on that, because we, we say it's political signs, and, and it's obvious in our code, so until we change our code.
What is it you want clarification on?
Uh, whether or not, based on what the mayor said, that the, uh, state of Georgia has a code that says you cannot differentiate between a Georgia football flag sign sitting out in your front yard and political sign.
Yeah, if you have to read it, um, I think their, their words are, if you have to read it to decide what type of sign it is, then that's a problem, basically. Because you can put whatever you want, now they call them, what is it, free, what's the word, Carol, um, freedom of speech signs, something like that, um, that you can, you can, we can limit the square footage of signs, we can't limit the number of signs. We can limit the total square footage per road frontage, and we can differentiate between ball signs of what they call billboards or off-site, off-premise advertising signs, but if somebody wanted to put 1,000 signs in their yard that were the size of a postage stamp, then they could do that. So you can't limit the number, but you can limit the total.
As long as they're 15 foot off the road.
You can, and, uh.
We can limit that.
Yes.
But if you wouldn't, you check into that.
Can't limit that. And it's different on state, it's 25 feet, I believe, on state highways, and 15 on county and city streets. And, um, county ordinances are a little bit different than ours, um, so we gotta be conscious that here in our area, some of the county roads are a little different, but, uh, their remedies are, you know, notify the offending party, and then they have 30 days, I believe it is, to correct the situation, and of course, after you know, by that time, you know, the, the election vote. So, um, I had researched that last, or two years ago, when that came up with some of my signs, and, uh, I became pretty.
City of Wimson empowered to remove or cause to be removed all political signs not conforming, doesn't say anything about a delay, if you read the ordinance or the.
Said we can remove them, and we keep them, and then the people can come.
Come and pick them up, it's not destroyed, just pick them up, if they're not in the right spot, move them.
Right.
I mean, that's just, it's not just one person is whoever has a mouth, that's kind of my point.
Yeah, we have done that in the past, where we have gone, in fact, I removed some signs today, somebody had put up, and there's one that popped up right after I removed some from somebody's yard sale, that I removed an advertising sign today that was not in the right place, and there's another one I noticed coming in here about Free, you know, what was it, Lawn Mower Service or.
That's been there at Ray's forever.
And, and that was not legal, so, yeah.
If everybody was Jehovah's Witnesses, there wouldn't be any signs, that's what, of race or Mr. Driver says, do.
But we will find then the, uh, caveat on election signs, because there are some things under elections for the 150 feet from the polling places that where you can't wear or post a sign or campaign, I think it says, uh, within 150 feet of polling places. But we'll have to look and see if there's any other things that identify campaign signs. I don't think there is, I went through the state code, we tested it last week, trying to find something on it, and, um, from what I understand is the First Amendment rights that trumped it federal, is that you can't determine a sign legality by what it says unless it is profane, or I think it might end threatening, or something, I can't remember now what it was. So what is it you're trying to?
I'm asking you, can they, uh, when Carol walked in, she said we would be moving some signs for a church and also a Georgia Bulldog flag on a mailbox.
That's because of the distance requirement?
Yes, yes.
Distance and/or that he said political signs, because you can't tell dirt, you'd have to remove them all. Remove them all, I don't think if it's on your mailbox, you'd have to move it. And it's not on my mailbox, I don't care.
So you're just concerned with the distance requirement?
Well, distance and how they differentiate between a political sign and just like a church sign, I think freedom of religion might trump that as well if it's, it's, uh, now, of course, you don't wanna put 500 of them out there. And that should be done through the county's, uh, uh, code enforcement officer, right? Since we don't have one.
Where's Dewey when you need him?
He's running for office.
Running for office.
Dewey's eating peanuts.
Dewey's, Dewey's eating peanuts.
Yeah, there's a separate section of federal code on post offices and, uh, mailboxes, and they have said that no items, um, including signs, may be placed inside or attached to a mailbox. A mailbox is exclusively for delivery of mail and is considered federal property. While the restrictions are strict, some signs are allowed in the immediate vicinity of the mailbox, provided they cannot interfere with mail delivery. And the federally forbidden signs, following signs typically permitted, that says on or near your mailbox, numbers are required on all mailboxes, freezing, casing, mail carriers, the numbers must be put invisible, blah, 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 and the height restriction. Decorative elements, you can use decorative art and stickers on the exterior of your mailbox, as long as they don't interfere with the carrier's ability to deliver mail. Reflective numbers are also recommended to improve visibility, and then it gives the prohibitive items, you can't attach flyers or advertisement or other items without postage, items that can be placed in a mailbox that do not bear proper postage. So there's a lot of stuff on federal law about the mailboxes, it looks like they lightened it up a little bit, saying that you can decorate your mailboxes, but if there's a sign ordinance that says they have to be 70 feet tall, uh, that decoration would be considered a sign now. We have to legally, uh, look at that, that being.
No more balloons that said we had a baby.
There you go, lock them up.
We do have ordinances, and GMA has, uh, guidelines for ordinances on what are considered signs and what are not, and they've even said that if there's a mural on the back wall of a store that has a glass front, but it's still readable, legible, and visible from all of the premises, that it is also considered a sign. So they, they get into a lot of definitions of signs, and most all of that is covered in our sign ordinance. Uh, granted, we haven't kept our progress every change in federal and state law, but we try.
These are a couple of buildings downtown Griffin, gonna have to go.
You think?
Yep, that one right there next, what was it, the Sixth Street Pier?
Oh, yeah.
All those angel wings on the side.
All that stuff on the side.
Gotta go, sorry.
Yeah, we have some of that here, and some of it predated our zoning, um, there, there's a few little caveats on that. New business, fire flow testing results, um, according to Hard and Sloot, uh, they got the results back from the fire flow testing, and maybe wherever, last week, they exceeded the minimums by a, a little bit. Before, when we opened one hydrant, the residual flow on another hydrant was effectively zero, and now we had at least 20 PSI, so it has made a good, a good change. We're still gonna probably do a little bit more testing, just to get different points around the city identified, but on the ones they tested, it looks like it has been a dramatic improvement on what we had. That's really good for our flight, firefighting capabilities.
When does that get, uh, sent back into the state for, and reported back to the insurance company so that it lowers?
We do that every few years, the ISO, the insurance service office comes around, and really what they do, they, they test everything, I mean, they have to look at ladders, they look at hoses, they look at pumps, they go all through our fire apparatus. Basically, the old adage is, you gotta put the wet stuff on the red stuff. But what that means is, if there's a fire down on Glanton Mill Road, yes, you gotta put water on it, but if there's not a fire hydrant there, how many tankers do we have? How many gallons can we shuttle? How many firefighters do we have to drive those tankers? How many firefighters arrive with the other apparatus to use the shuttle of water to put it out? So it gets into all that, and, and like I said, the ladders, the hoses.
Can we, uh, can we send them information since we've updated the order system?
They come through on the schedule and do it all as one.
So there's no way for us to be.
Well, we're, we're at like the top of, at the best we can be, I mean, we're right at the best, you know, rating that you're gonna get for a municipality. We're as good as the city of Atlanta or wherever, you know, for those of our, our fire protection capabilities, so it's not, we're really good. There's only one area in the county right now that's a little low, and that's the north end up near, um, no, off of. end up near, um, no, off of, uh, Glanton Mill, before you get to Glanton Mill, on the left, it's not plantation, but it starts with an H, a road up there, like if you go into Glanton Mill before you get to the mill, it's on the left.
The deer, the deer, deer, uh, deer one?
No.
Uh, three sixty-two west?
No, it's, you go down Glanton Mill, like, like you're going down dirt Glanton Mill and you keep going and you keep going before you get to Scottville County, right before you get to Scottville County. On the left, there's a road that comes back and that road is not covered, the, what, one of that ISO rating criteria is you have to be within five road miles of the fire station. And there's an area up there that there is not a fire station within five road miles, it's just outside, that's why we're looking at another fire station on three sixty-two near Scottville, that will cover that area.
Good deal, that's, that's.
So we're, we're moving in the right direction, our, I mean, the water, I think we're gonna see a lot better and the biggest thing is we can now isolate areas of the city when we need to work on something, instead of cutting the whole city off, fix one break on Old Fable.
Yeah, Mr. Harris hardly needs to live in that.
That's right, we definitely didn't let him know.
And then cause the, the, we need to.
Absolutely.
Give them more, that's good, I mean, that's why we did the water, make sure we have fire protection down there. Uh, I, did they, did they say how much pressure they could have if they?
Doesn't say anything about.
Yes, they, they.
They said it didn't blow, didn't go below twenty, but you still gotta have a little pressure on it.
Yes.
And for the pumps.
All the time. Yeah, it was good. Reaching to catch the fire flow out of two hydrants at once.
That's good.
Um, I, I'll pull that up, we can send it out, but they did send me a rundown of that, they, they showed me the results. They did some of the worst places in the city historically, when you open one hydrant, people lost water.
Oh, yeah.
Like, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, if we had opened a hydrant, say, up here on Old Fable Road, people in Ashley Lynn would have turned on their faucet and there would have been nothing coming out, just for those hydro four, over here, it took the pressure off the higher elevation over there, but now, uh, we've got that.
All of them have to be sweating, but that's basically what I'm saying, right?
Okay, next, receipt of recommendation from Planning Commission, Williamson zoning variation twenty-five dash one, that should have been, I'll see, was there something in our package on that?
You covered that with Cory?
I, I did, I covered that with him and so that's, you know, the recommendation from the planning commission was to deny the variance because our ordinance says that's what you have to do. And that was also the recommendation from our zoning administrator was to deny the variance because our ordinance says that's what you have to do. Um, they all had, we all had discussions about, yeah, that is what our ordinance says, but we would like to fix that and make it so there's some way around having, have somebody tear down something that they just did correctly. Um, the state, as I mentioned, in, uh, the attorney's conference that was held just a few weeks ago, uh, they addressed that and the possibility of vested rights for somebody and being able to use their property for the intended purpose. And if we were to tell you or Cory Daye that you cannot build a deck on your property, you know, how do you do that with somebody that bought that property legally and it's owned for that use and we're telling them that they can't do it? You know, we're telling them that they have to get a permit first, but then if it happens to get done without a permit first, you tell them they have to tear it down, it's just, we're, we're gonna try to make that more user friendly.
I think if they feel that, we wouldn't win.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good chance that we wouldn't, the way that the new law and the interpretation goes, so that's one of the reasons we need to change our ordinance and, and not go down that rabbit hole anymore.
We need to also make an adjustment to that fence.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's four foot.
That did come up with that, because, you know, the, the reason behind the municipalities to do that is so that somebody can maintain their own fence and mow on the outside of it, weed eat on the outside of it, without having to trespass on the neighbor's property in case the neighbors of the type that says, don't come on my property. You know, now you can maintain the outside of your own fence on your own property and that was the reason for that four feet, if you put it up to six inches or a foot, yeah, you're gonna have to stand near the neighbor's property to maintain your fence. Um, but again, if both property owners had fences, now you'd lost eight feet between the two, they may be nice enough neighbors that they would just say, hey, I'll put my fence right here and you run yours across the back onto my property and we'll share the fence and the load.
Yeah.
Can you make that fence adjustment so that it could be accessed?
You pay for half of it.
And that way it's not in most places.
Maybe, but we, we'd be doing it through like a D.
Right, yes, it would have to be some kind of a whole, something that later on, if somebody else moved in that house and the town can say, keep your fence off my property.
As long as it's on the line, it'd be tough.
Yeah.
You carry your own down if you have to, buddy.
Well, it's just like we say, houses had to be fifty feet back on the front, they gotta have thirty foot side yards and thirty foot backyards, or an accessory building's gotta be at least ten feet off of a property line and accessory building has to be at least twelve feet from a principal residence, you know, they, all of these things have them and other municipalities have not challenged the thirty foot side yards and backyards, but for some reason the fence thing seems to get a lot of, a lot of scrutiny. But, uh, you know, we can, we can talk about that, we can involve planning commission, we can verify on the state code, but I, I think we can probably make some changes there. The county, you know, they get into some trouble when they did away with fence, um, fences requiring building permits, just like we did at fifteen Maple, where the people build a fence without a permit and it turned out they went way over onto the neighbor's property. And when we finally found out about it and looked and said, you went way over on the neighbor's property, they had to pull up the fence and rebuild it in a legal spot and have a permit for it. You know, but that's the reason for the permit is to try to help make sure you put it in where you're supposed to. And it's not that we're gonna go out and measure, it's that they give us a picture of their parcel and they tell us they're gonna put it four feet from the property line, we believe them and then they get to put the fence up. If they didn't, they can go back and say, but you told us you were doing this.
Just like that house kinda catted corner to yours, when they went out and actually ran the, uh, survey, that fence was all over the place.
Yeah.
It went through, that thing I'm sitting going, you hadn't taken it down yet, so I guess nobody's arguing.
Nobody's bought their other lot over there yet. All right, now we've got, uh, executive session for the purposes, purposes of personnel and potential litigation and questions, so now you're gonna take a motion to exit.
Do we officially accept the planning commission's recommendation?
What's that?
Like, we need to officially accept it or?
Uh, yeah, we, we can do that because, uh, that was on there, so I'll take a motion for receipt of the recommendation from the planning commission concerning Williamson zoning variation twenty-one professional. Both motion, got that motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we consider receiving that recommendation from the last commission, thank you. Okay, now I'll take that motion for exiting open session, entering executive session, I will see, it's fifty dash fourteen for the purpose of solo personnel and potential litigation, motion by Bob, second by Tom, Tom, all in favor? Four oh, it's now twenty-one nineteen.